There's like three different ones here.
I'll make a motion to approve as written.
Which one, all three of them?
All three.
Yeah, there's three.
June 11th, July 9th, and July 23rd. Olive Stansky is now standing on 23rd.
It's gonna say you're in here.
Yep. I'll keep the motion for June 11th and July 9th.
Or if you withdraw, I'll do for all three.
Okay, now a second.
So I would move that the minutes of June 11th, July 9th, and July 23rd be approved as written.
So moved. All those in favor?
Okay, approval of manifest. The first one is for... Okay, it's for August 13th, 2025. Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission Circuit Right of Services, June 2025, invoice 7297, 630, 2025, for $1,947.65. Southern New Hampshire Planning Review Services, June 2025, invoice 7298. The date is 630, 2025, for a total of 414.65, for a grand total of 2362.30.
I would move that we agree it, subject to Mr. Eva's name being properly spelled in the SNHPC backup. You have him as Mr. Leba.
I don't know if I can go and change that.
Oh, well, just noting that it should be Mr. Eva, not Mr. Leba.
For a second.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Also, we do have some correspondence from the Deerfield Conservation Commission.
Was that for both of the invoices? Yeah, the other's another, there's another...
Yeah, I know. This one here is, we already approved it, it just didn't get signed.
No, I think, I don't know, I don't have them.
Approved at the meeting, not signed for May 28th. This one.
The SNHPC dues, fiscal dues. Okay, we don't have to deal with that then.
Yeah, they just need me to sign it, because we already approved it. All right. We have correspondence. I'll start off from... The bond release for over on Range Road. "Toement may concern the bond for the cross subdivision Range Road Deerfield, New Hampshire, was provided to the town of Deerfield, the Board of Selectmen by Berkeley Insurance Company. Covered were the improvements on Range Road map 414-71 in KNA number 210816-3. The bond amount was $79,648.05. Was to ensure the work from any defects. The works has now been completed, the bond is no longer needed. We are, as such, we are asking for the bond to be released." Now, I know that we voted on this, but somehow it didn't make it into the minutes. So we're gonna re-vote on this, so that it makes it into the minutes. According to Karen, I think they've located the paperwork. And she said Chris found it.
Okay.
All right. So what I need is a motion and a second for us to...
Redo it?
Redo it.
Make a motion to accept, second.
All those in favor of reducing the bond for the bond for cross subdivision on Range Road? Yes or yea or nay?
Yes.
Yes.
All those in favor? Okay, so we've got that one. There's another one that's out in the wings, there's another letter on it. I got an email, it's for McCarron Way. So what we need, there's an amount of $1,000 being held. And that was for waiting for the grass to grow in, in the spring, and that did happen. And we need to release that $1,000 to Ryan Tabor. The motion to accept, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So we have correspondence from the Deerfield Conservation Commission concerning the conditional use permit. I will read this aloud. To the Deerfield Planning Board, the representatives from GZA and Eversource attended the Deerfield Conservation Commission on July 14th, 2025, to discuss a conditional use permit application proposed for the 391, 373, and the 385 transmission line structure replacement project in Deerfield. They requested that the Deerfield Conservation Commission share any recommendations with the Deerfield Planning Board. With this current application, we want to raise concerns regarding the proposed impacts to wetlands in the project area. The CUP indicates that there will be 65,399 square feet of temporary wetland impacts. Temporary timber matting will be utilized in these areas for the duration of the project, and then removed following the completion. GZA and Eversource indicated that those areas will be seeded with native seed mix in order to restore the vegetation following the removal. If necessary, however, it is unlikely that a scrub, shrub wetlands proposed... Excuse me, let me get back to that for a second. A scrub shrub of seed mix alone. We would request that every effort be made to ensure these areas are restored to a more adequate natural vegetative state, i.e. native shrub plantings. The CUP also indicates 181,463 square feet of permanent wetland impacts. These impacts will occur adjacent to the wetlands within the 100-foot buffer that is included as part of the Deerfield zoning in Wetland Conservation Overlay District. The upland areas adjacent to the wetlands are critical to maintain the function and of the value, excuse me, and values of the wetlands, which including maintaining, improving water quality, mitigation of flooding, and providing critical wildlife habitat. Allowing these permanent changes to a significant area of wetland buffer for the development of access routes will significantly decrease the ecological value of the wetlands at the project site. We would like to request that Eversource do everything possible to minimize the impacts to the area 100 feet beyond delineated wetland boundary, the distance defined in the Wetlands Conservation Overlay District. The Deerfield Conservation Commission also had questions about the material proposed to be used for road development and maintenance, with one member citing other similar project sites where material is washing back into the wetlands. We would like to request that Eversource commits to using the highest quality material when installing access roads and uses best management practices to minimize any potential erosion and negative impacts to the nearby wetlands. Additionally, we would respectfully request that GZA and Eversource conduct a post-project inspection following the completion of the proposed work in order to ensure restoration efforts are adequate. We appreciate the role you have played in continuing to encourage important protective measures for the Deerfield Water Resources habitats, excuse me, habitats and wildlife. Sincerely, the Deerfield Conservation Commission's Rita Fray, Chair. What's that correspondence? So I think what we'll do, did you wanna, did you wanna do something now, or go to this first, Cam?
I think we can just go right into the CUP.
So we wanna go with a continuation of the public hearing about the, excuse me, conditional use permit, Eversource Energy Transition Line Structure Replacement. Take it away.
Excellent, thanks for having me back. Do you want to get settled? I'm Tracy Starmer, GZA, you might remember me from the last meeting. Happy to answer those questions the Conservation Commission had. Here with Jeremy Fennell for Ashley, representing Eversource.
Sorry. I was... Recommanding myself about my forgettiness of driving the wrong car with the wrong plans in it. Okay, continue.
Yeah, so is everyone familiar with the project? Do you want us to just go right into the questions from the Conservation Commission?
Did you take a look at any of this?
No, I haven't.
All right. Why don't you take a look at this? Because what we did is, they reviewed everything last meeting.
Yeah, and I can give a quick summary if you like.
And the Conservation Commission hadn't had a chance to review it, correct, Errol?
Yep.
Okay. So we wanted to give them a chance to review it, and we were also shy, two members. Or three? It was just three?
Three.
It was three. So you guys had some more things that you were trying to get from... The fishing game, correct? Or are you still working on that?
So I can give you a little update on that. At that point, Fishing Game was waiting for the results of a rare snake study in a different town in the right-of-way, in Derry. And so what they're proceeding with is reviewing that separately.
Okay.
They're gonna issue, we haven't received them, we expect normal things, like no plastic mesh in the right-of-way, items like that. We have not received it. But once they are received, they're put right into the state permits as conditions, into the alteration of terrain. And of course, we're happy to copy you on them, but they will be in state permits, so...
Okay.
They'll have to be invited by.
What was one of the... Other items that we were talking about, Errol? On the... I think that was... I mean, the major concern from the conservation perspective was the permanent... Permanent wetland impact going so close to the wetlands. Some places, 10 feet, 10 feet away, I think. And to the extent that you can, following the protocol, minimize and mitigate that. And I don't know if there's been any change on that in terms of... And I think that was the major observation, was that, you know, the 100-foot buffer was just sort of, you know, didn't seem to make any difference.
So, yeah, in this portion of the right-of-way, most is really existing road, and a lot of it is already stone road. And most of the proposed impact is really for work pads. The good news, I think you'll like this, is that the work pads are reduced to 30 by 60 foot footprints. And then everything else is revegetated with seeding. And it is monitored past construction to make sure it's stabilized, so that is monitored. And then we can certainly make sure, and we are supposed to monitor that sediment doesn't go into wetlands, so that's part of the regular monitor.
Right, yeah. And I think part of the concern there, related to the erosion, not that it's permanently, you know, fixable, but...
Yeah, we do monitor that and would make recommendations if we saw things from storm events and everything else. Yeah, we understand that concern.
Yeah.
Keep that in mind.
And any... I think there's a request to have a post-project inspection.
Yep, so that's already baked into the project. We do monitoring for NIPs for the Construction General Permit, and that includes monitoring until things are stabilized. Typically, that includes a couple months after, so...
Don, any questions?
I've been through it all before, and they do, they monitor. Once they do it, they monitor after it's done, make sure the growth is coming back. If it does...
And then we reviewed it.
I've always been part of the regeneration on that, so I know once they clean up, they clean up.
Jerry? Jerry? So you, the last thing that, right now, you're just, you're waiting for Fishing Game to give you their, and they have one just for Derry?
So they're splitting it out?
Yeah.
And, you know, it'd be fair for you all to condition us on incorporating those conditions when they are received?
Yep. Okay.
I think the Conservation request was to see that report. It hasn't come out yet, right?
Okay.
Yeah, no. But we can forward it when we receive it, the conditions.
Yep, that'll be good.
Just a reminder, that happened at the last CUP, where their comments weren't available and the conditions weren't available. And the board conditionally approved the CUP with the condition being that the town, the Conservation Commission and Planning Board is copied on those conditions.
So it just, because that's what we can do, we can do a conditional approval. Pending your, getting your final information. And obviously, we have to set a bond amount and inspection fees for our inspector, Keach Nordstrom. Basically, I was thinking about, we'd be looking at about a $5,000 for inspection, and probably $30,000 on a bond for the work. And then, obviously, pre-construction meeting. And then, once the project's wrapped up, we'll go take a walk like we did on the other one. Sounds good. Any other questions? So I need a motion for a conditional approval pending receiving your report from Fishing Game. Anything else that you can pick up, Cam?
Nope, and the performance guarantee is, you know, acceptable.
Yeah.
I think that's it.
Yeah.
And just, and copying the Conservation Commission and Planning Board and all.
Yep.
How do you anticipate copying?
We can email, we can forward it if that works. If you like emails, if you want it officially in a letter, whatever you like.
I think we can handle email.
Sure. And again, what they make us do is put it right on the plan, on a note sheet too, so we can forward the note sheet when it's finalized.
Okay. I need a motion for the conditional, conditional use permit for the 391, 373, and the 385 Transmission Line Structure Replacement Project in Deerfield, New Hampshire. Go ahead. Go ahead. I have to abstain.
You have to abstain.
Make a motion to accept, as said.
Second. Okay, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
You ready to go?
Appreciate it.
It's all right, one abstention.
Hold on.
Just an abstention.
Okay, oh, yeah, yeah, that's fine.
One quick thing, because it's been causing problems with our minutes and audio. Shuffle all these in and bring them so they're all... Because if you listen to the Planning Board YouTube, where they take our minutes from versus Select Board, you can't hear us very well, so maybe...
Speak into the microphone, is that what you're saying?
Speak into the microphone.
Well, that's part of the idea, Mr. Sandborn. Testing.
All right.
Thank you.
So when do you anticipate your... Starting the project?
So right now, pending permits and everything, and not outages changing and all that, April of 2026.
Okay.
Is what it's scheduled for right now.
All right, then just...
And of course, with the pre-construction meeting, we have to schedule that.
Right. So as soon as you're ready for that, just let us know, and then that way we can go.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
You don't mind?
Let's have it.
We have Mr. John Barry, who admittedly, he called my office, and I didn't get the voicemail, but, so he's brought in...
I'll share it, Donnie. She has a bite.
I'll share it, Errol.
I just took a shower.
Take it away, John.
John Barry at 51 Ridge Road in Deerfield. And this property, which used to be the inn in Deerfield, is shown as a commercial property. So what I'm looking to do is build residence on that property. And this shows the front half of the property adjacent to Ridge Road. And I did talk with the interim building inspector, and he directed me to the Planning Board, and the website directed me to the Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission, which I haven't got to talk with, other than leaving a couple voicemails, so... I just wanted some input, before I spent a bunch of money on this. This is, this shows a total frontage of... 381 feet. And there's a large leach field on a property, but there's a field right now in an area enclosed in blue, which seems to meet the setback from property lines, septic tank, leach field, and roadway, so... I just wanted to know if it's permissible on a commercial property to add a residence, and...
So this is already here?
Yes.
Okay, so you have 209 feet on the new lot, or the other lot? For frontage. So this is existing on the 172?
Is this the old Deerfield Inn?
Yes, the old inn at Deerfield.
Yeah.
So... The other one's already built, so it's already grandfathered there, the 172. So where they want to put the additional dwelling area meets the criteria of a 200 feet of frontage. Now, out in the back, that leach field is servicing the existing building, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Do you intend to tie that new building into the same leach field?
Yes, I understand that requires, obviously, work from a septic designer and a state approval. One avenue I have considered is reducing the number of bedrooms on a large house there by combining, there's four rooms, four small rooms on the third floor, I thought of taking out the wall between them, so that there's only two rooms up there. And possibly the same on the second floor for two of the bedrooms.
So you're gonna mean two lots, though? You're gonna have the existing and then the new lot, you're not combining?
Right.
Okay, so...
Yeah, there's not, there's not... The previous subdivision was for my new house down behind us.
Okay.
So this has a five-acre lot, and the one next to it is down behind us, 32 acres.
So just to clarify, are you, are you looking to subdivide the slot? Or have an accessory use to the inn?
An accessory use to the inn.
This is all set. And it's just gonna be somewhere within that shaded area, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, roughly 1,500 square feet.
Okay.
Do you know roughly what square foot each of the existing home is?
5,700 and some odd, I don't know the exact amount.
I had a...
You had it written.
I had it on my other paper saying what the, what the town has it on the map, as, which is approximately the same as I calculate. But exactly the number, right around 5,000.
Okay.
What's it listed at for how many bedrooms, formally?
The present house?
Present house, yes.
I think it's 11.
11 bedrooms?
Yeah.
Because it used to be, it used to be the inn, so they're small. But they don't all have bathrooms, right? They were shared?
Right, they share.
They have shared bathrooms down hallway?
Yes.
Yeah, so are they really considered usable? If he's gonna combine them, so you're gonna cut that down?
I was just curious to get an idea of what the existing septic system may have been designed for at the time, which it looks like it's sizable.
Yeah, what is the...
How many bathrooms were in the place, do you know?
Well, it depends on your column. There's a half bath on the third floor. The second floor has, the toilets are in separate rooms, except one that has a shower, but there's four toilets on the, on the second floor, and there's two on the first floor, so... Seven owners, one and a half.
But they could be toilets.
There's eight toilets.
And there's too many toilets, it doesn't make sense.
You wouldn't, you wouldn't consider those eight bathrooms?
I think that's why she's holding it.
A lot needs to change in the big house, so...
Is the big house occupied?
Currently by myself, my husband, my brother, my son.
More than likely, you're gonna wanna separate the leach fields, one for one lot and one for the other lot.
Now, would that be a requirement or a recommendation? What's...
Well, you'd probably, you would need a maintenance agreement for the two lots.
No, they're not two lots, we're talking all on 51 Ridge Road.
Well, no, because you have two lots. You want an additional dwelling, and you have 209 feet of frontage.
No, no, that, that frontage was just a measurement that was on print. So it's really one, it's one property with that total...
So that's where you're coming up with the total frontage is 381, combining the two frontages?
Yes.
381 feet plus minus.
So is there a separate lot for the building itself that's there, there isn't?
No, I was told that it's probably okay to build an additional house on it. My first, I was looking at an accessory dwelling in a building that's back there, says, well, that doesn't apply to commercial property. So it is possible you could create, you could build another dwelling on there, but you gotta go before the Planning Commission, so...
We have a 750 square foot acre acreade.
Yeah, right now.
Well, there's nowhere...
Talk about that later, but...
They don't have enough.
Yeah, so... How long has it been being used as a residential use?
Well, prior to 2005, when I purchased it, there was rooms rented. And I rented rooms up until my daughter moved in, and like she said, her family and her brother's in a room, and there's a friend of mine that's renting a room. So there's still room rental there, but like, the third floor is just empty, and there's a couple of bedrooms empty on the second floor.
Well, there's another way around it, where if you put in a Smith Road, you could make an additional lot.
Yeah.
You come in with a road which creates frontage off of Ridge Road, not on Ridge Road, but off of Ridge Road. You would go in with a Smith Road. And then you could create a new lot for the new building that you wanna build, and then...
Now, there's only five acres there.
Total?
Yeah.
I thought every...
Then it doesn't work.
Okay.
So I thought you had an additional five acres besides this.
Oh, no.
The whole lot?
Is five acres.
The whole thing you have is five acres.
Yeah.
Well, plus the 32.
But it's being used, it's being used.
He owns a separate lot adjacent to it, but it's completely separate, yeah.
That's 32 acres.
Yes, 32 acres, separate.
It's got a driveway down the side of this, on the right-hand side, according to this print, and...
Make the other one five.
You own a piece of land adjacent to this piece of land.
Right behind it.
So potentially, you could make your existing house a three-acre lot. You'd have to do a lot line adjustment.
I'm sorry, make the existing one a what lot?
A three-acre lot, which is an accepted building lot in the town of Deerfield. And then you'd have to build a road. Or, well, then you could go with a driveway off Ridge, if you did that. If you made your... The big house that's already there, if you made that an independent lot, a three-acre lot. And then take whatever land you need to make where you wanna, wherever you wanna build...
Right, Pete?
What's that?
From the 32 acres?
Right. If you own... If you own that land, you could do lot line adjustments to make a single building lot for the big building and then make another three acre lot for the new building.
Yeah.
Okay, you know, without literally...
So, yeah, the 32 acres is set behind, but there is a piece right here.
Yeah.
You would need frontage for both lots, 200 feet of frontage.
It's 20 feet short.
So it's going to, you're going to have to make a decision on, you know, what do you want to do with this 32 acre lot? If, you know, if you don't need frontage on Ridge Road, then maybe you can take some of it and give it to, you know, creating a new three acre lot and then taking some from the 32 acres, giving it to a new three acre lot. Is that...
Taken from the 32 acres on Ridge Road?
So is there, is there a dwelling unit on the, on your bigger lot there is?
Can we turn that so they can see?
Yeah, I live, I live down back, this is still my mailing address, but I live down back. And now those guys can't see it.
Well, they've already seen it. What I'm trying to tell you to do is add 20 feet here.
Yeah.
Make a single lot, add some acreage back here, make this a separate lot.
Mm-hmm.
Two three acre lots.
I guess the problem then would be frontage on the bigger lot.
Is Lois Lane, what's Lois Lane? What's Lois Lane?
That's where he lives currently.
I don't know, but is that...
That's a driveway, that's, that's his driveway.
Oh, that's your driveway.
It's a driveway?
Yeah.
Okay, so you can't, no frontage on it?
Well, other than that, it already comes out to Ridge Road.
What gives frontage to that 32 acre lot, 33 acre lot?
Is that the piece that's 120 feet?
It's 125.
It's 125 going out to the 32 acre.
Yeah.
Well, that's an old lot.
That's an existing old lot, yeah. But you can't really cut that down any because now you're going to take less frontage.
Right, I got a variance when I subdivided to...
Right, to go 125 instead of 200.
Yeah, and 125 was recommended by the surveyor that, you know, you've got to at least make it as big as you can, so.
If you cut 20 off of that 125, you have to go back to the ZBA.
Get a variance on that.
Yeah.
So where it's existing, would that be harder to do, to do?
I think, I think he'd be better off if, if you went to seek a variance for relief for frontage, asking for relief on the, if you were to create a three acre lot with the, where the existing houses, that 172.
Because you need 19 feet total. So he only needs 19 feet total.
So that might be the, you know, the easiest way. The other option is to do an accessory dwelling unit because I think there could be an argument made that, you know, this really isn't a commercial use.
Right.
So family members living there?
Dividing this is problematic, as you can see the location of the leach field makes it difficult, even if you get a variance to divide this, is, how do you draw the lot?
Yeah, it would be an interesting looking lot, that's for sure.
But I could end up, again, have a maintenance agreement on the leach field and...
That is true, yeah.
Owned by both, both lots.
Just enlarge the existing leach field, have an agreement on it?
This leach field is huge.
Yeah, it is.
126 feet long.
It is big.
So, right now, the existing building is 5,000 square feet. If you wanted to make an accessory dwelling unit, you could have a building that has 1,650 square feet based on the 33 percent.
And if they're doing renovations, they're going to probably be removing some of the bathrooms, correct?
And that would help you down the road.
That house needs major renovations.
Right.
So whatever you remove from, say you remove three out of seven.
So...
Say you remove three out of seven, you could put two back in the other house.
So the question is, if you tried to go with an ADU, would 1,650 square feet be enough?
Right, but he's cutting it.
Yes. We play in the woods a lot, we just need to sleep in it, you know?
Okay, well, no, because, you know, if you need 2,500 square feet, well, 1,600 isn't 2,500.
Right.
So...
It's easier to claim.
I think she had said 1,500 before.
Yeah, 15 is what we're aiming for.
125.
Okay, so based on the current way our ADU is, it's 33 percent of the total square footage of the existing building, so that would get you up to 1,650.
Right.
Which is a pretty good sized building.
Yeah.
And then technically you wouldn't need a maintenance agreement on the leach field because that accessory dwelling unit is part of the existing lot.
Just, just a question though, is the ADU regulations comply, I mean, does it, does it work with this property because it's zoned commercial? That was what, I forget his name, the interim inspector said, well, that's commercial property, so just ask for another building there.
Well, you could, sorry to keep interrupting, you, you could potentially get a variance for the ADU. I think you could make a pretty easy argument that this, this building is really residential, it has been for X amount of years.
We have commercial overlay over the whole town.
Yeah, and I don't know if he meant because of how it's in the tax maps that it's considered commercial.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out what, what, by what authority is it deemed commercial?
Probably back when it was the inn.
Is this the listing on Avatar or, you know, on the tax card?
Yeah, it could be for when it was approved.
I mean, I would, I would explore that, and Jeannie, I don't know if you have any views, but I would explore, you know, making it residential.
Moving it out of commercial.
Yeah, getting it out of commercial. And, you know, you might need a, toilets, but I, you probably want to get rid of a couple of them. But I mean, that's, I was going to ask for about the, the size of this leach field, how many...
I think it's, I think it's probably, if, if at one point it was 11 bedrooms, I'd say it's based on...
Probably sized for that, so...
And the state, state doesn't care about the number of bathrooms you have, it's bedrooms.
It's the bedrooms, okay.
How many bedrooms did you plan on removing?
I would eliminate three bedrooms that I could do easily.
Well, that, 1,650 is a three bedroom house.
Well, the original leach field design from 1990 something, which all I've got is a kind of torn up drawing, is, says it was for eight bedrooms. And I think somewhere along the line when they put a second floor on the L, there was a variance to use that leach field or something. I mean, there was some paper saying that the, that the previous owner could use that leach field with the additional three bedrooms they had put on it.
There may be, there may be a copy of the plan in the building inspector's office on the, particularly if it dates to the mid 90s, it should be available to show exactly the number of bedrooms the state, state has approved.
So you, as Errol suggested, you would probably be better to turn it back to residential. That way you're not held to commercial standards. And like you said, you, then you would be able to go in and get a building permit for an ADU up to 1,650 square feet.
So John, I know you said you spoke with the building inspector, so maybe we can meet together with him next week and we can explain what the planning board has said here and just so he doesn't try to, you know, say that it's, it can't be done or whatever, we can talk through it with him, so.
Okay, I would love to do that.
Okay.
And the important thing too is the, is the fact that the ADU has to be owned by the owner of the lot.
Yeah, I noticed the state mandated that there couldn't be any condos, con- condoization.
Yeah.
Is that the right word? But anyway, they couldn't turn them into condos and it had to be remain as an ADU with that property.
Right.
All right, well, you know, one small concern of ours is keeping it commercial may be valuable, but especially if you intend to, you know, run a, any sort of business out of there, which...
Yes, something we are...
I've been here 25 years and I have, the only business I've done was renting rooms.
Yeah, because you could, you could still have a residence with a commercial use in it, you know, a home business in Deerfield.
So even if we were looking to put something as a business in the barn?
Family run business?
Yeah, family run business.
Yeah, you know, depending on what it is, if, you know, if you have people showing up, sometimes that triggers a site plan for the planning board to look at.
Yeah.
But if it's a, you know, a home business as defined in the zoning, then, you know, it's allowed.
Yeah, and there are also some, some permitted uses as well.
So figure out what you want to do with that, but...
Be the first customer.
Sounds like the, the smoothest path to what you want to get done.
All right.
Excellent.
Thank you very much for your time.
Real quick question, did you speak with the present inspector or the past inspector?
The Northwood inspector who's covering up.
That's the present, perfect, that's the present.
Yeah, present.
I just wanted to make sure who we were dealing with.
Do we have any hopes of getting our own?
I believe we actually just extended an offer to somebody the other night.
Healthy water.
All right, well, that will be good to see. All right, so give me a call, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you everyone.
Thank you guys, thanks very much for coming in.
All right.
Who's that?
Yeah.
I met with him, I spoke with him a few times, but he's pretty sharp.
Okay, other business, we, we already voted to reduce the bonds and release the bonds for McCarran and Range Road. So Cam's got some updates for us on...
What do you guys want to talk about first? I can talk about changes to legislative changes that will impact Deerfield. I can talk about Deerfield Santa Gravel, whatever you guys want to talk about first.
I'd like to talk about Deerfield Santa Gravel.
Okay, so a gentleman named Christopher Berry, who is an engineer and surveyor, reached out to Karen.
When? Was that a couple days ago?
Well, actually it was a couple of weeks ago and they scheduled an appointment and the appointment was today.
So, so people reach out to schedule appointments, usually like what John was trying to do, it's usually myself, sometimes the building inspector, sometimes I call Pete depending on what we're talking about. So it was a couple of weeks ago, but Karen was on vacation.
That was last week.
Yeah, so it was two weeks ago. So he reached out saying, "Good morning, Ms. Clement, Ken Berry was in a month or two back on a fact finding mission on, on this project, Deerfield Santa Gravel. Since that time, we have worked to the required ground information pulled together so that we can prepare an updated application to the planning board. I would like to see if we could set up a meeting with you, code enforcement officer in the planner so that I can get a good understanding of the submission requirements." And so I was kind of, I kind of wasn't really sure what to do. I haven't heard back, hadn't heard back from Jim Raymond at the time, so I wasn't sure about the status of the injunction for, for one, or the cease and desist, two. Regardless, we ended up meeting with them. I asked Fred if he'd be willing to join just because he has a history of the approvals of that, of the previous permits going back to, I think, 2006 or something.
So it's seven years ago?
Is that all documented regardless?
What's that?
All the approvals and all of the paperwork and history of that stuff from back then?
It should be. I, the only thing I have in my...
Our filing system isn't exactly what we...
The only thing I...
I convinced me a 70 something year old man's memory is that good, to beat paperwork, so carry on.
Okay, so, yeah, we, they wanted to talk about phasing and a new application. So we went through the town's excavation regulations with them. They had a few questions I brought up that the town understands that there has been activity going on without a permit. And Chris, the engineer, basically said that he thinks it's two separate issues, one being coming into compliance, two, whatever the town wants to do in that sense. I said, fair enough, I'll walk you through these regulations. And then, so after that meeting, I wasn't sure what to do, I needed guidance from town council because I don't, in my view, it wasn't clear to me what the next steps are as far as do we allow an applicant to move forward with a new application even though, you know, the planning board has voted on to, you know, file an injunction on this, on the site for, you know, working without a permit. So we called Upton and Hatfield, we talked to Katie, and Katie gave us some recommendations that I wanted to talk to the board about tonight.
Before you do that, do we need to be in non-public to talk about legal advice?
That's a good question.
Got feeling you're worried about it, do it.
Well, it's, it's legal advice, there's a whole subsection on, on legal advice and...
Well, before we go to that...
Yeah.
Did they make suggestions or directives?
Well, she basically gave alternatives to what we could end up doing.
Yeah. Yeah, she gave us a couple scenarios of what the town could do, basically. So it's up to the planning board if you want to go into a...
Anything we say here becomes public knowledge.
Right.
If we're going to have any sort of legal strategy, it, we, I think we'd want to protect ourselves from it. Then we need to go into non-public.
So let me stop sharing.
Well, I don't even have the RSA 91A 2-3B under L just for legal.
Hold on, maybe in here.
It might be in there.
It's, I can get it on my phone.
91A what?
91A 2, or actually 3.
Well, you would, but he has to read the precise RSA.
Yeah.
And you got to do a roll call.
Yeah, yeah.
RSA 91A colon 3.
Well, and it's...
You have to quote the, the section.
You have the specific section. Here we, oh, now I don't want to do that.
Yeah, this is from New Hampshire Municipal Association.
91A 3, let's see.
Start with motion and end with...
Be 91...
Yeah.
91A 3L.
Subsection, L, 91A 3L, yeah.
Right.
Can you repeat that, please?
91A 3L.
Okay, so...
And it's, so we need a motion, motion to go into non-public and under L.
Under L, correct.
And then a second, and then you have to do a roll call.
Right. And then somebody's got to read it.
Yeah, right.
So...
I can read it, you want.
We need a motion to go into non-public.
The motion is to go into, into non-public under 91, come on, under 91A, 91-832L, which is for legal advice.
A second?
Considering legal advice.
And L reads, okay, you get the second.
We need a second?
L reads, consideration of legal, legal advice provided by legal counsel, either in writing or orally to one or more members of the public body, even where legal counsel is not present.
Okay. Errol?
Hi.
Jeff?
Yes.
Donis? Yes?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
I am, yes. Upstairs we go. Upstairs we go.
So what do we?
Who knows, the shadow knows.
What's the process now?
We're gonna.
Well.
We did that upstairs.
So a motion to seal the minutes.
A motion to seal the minutes.
Action taken or?
But we're also saying that we did take action.
Yeah.
Okay, so I guess we're coming back into public session. Note that there was action taken in the non-public. Move to seal the minutes and come out of non- and seal the minutes.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Roll call.
Uh, yes. Errol.
The senior, yes.
Wyman, yes.
Sanborn, yes.
Shiblehoop, yes.
We're now back in public session. You guys had enough?
No, capital improvement plan and master plan.
Make a motion.
Yeah, I gave you a little update and email. You are starting to get more projects. I understand. Errol, let me know that the title.
Solid Waste Committee.
Solid Waste.
Thank you very much.
That's the second time. Solid Waste Committee are looking at it on Monday.
Oh, good.
Is that when our special meeting is?
Yes.
Yes.
That's very good news. I'm looking forward to seeing that. I'm thinking about starting to schedule folks who have submitted projects to come into the planning board just to talk through their project. It's good documentation for us. And it's good for them to kind of try to explain. Go ahead.
When are you coming to town next week? Well, the reason why I'm asking that is so I can come talk to you about stuff from the highway department.
I can come Tuesday before. I can't do Wednesday and I'm pretty open other.
Okay. Well, it's touch base on Monday.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Well, if that works for you.
Yeah, well, no, I'll talk to you about it on Monday.
We started the YouTube video up, therefore we have no minutes after our non-public reentry.
What's that?
We have to start the video back up and redo the.
All of our minutes are documented off of that video.
It is streaming, but I'm not sure why.
That recording as well.
Yeah.
It is still on my screen. It's just because that's like a, that's for me to share my screen so you can see it.
Got it.
This is still.
Showing all of us, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, so Pete, you let me know.
Yeah.
And I'm happy to come. I will. We'll talk through highway.
Yeah.
Master plan. Apart from the stuff that we're working on, which is a build-out analysis. I think we'll have at least good enough for discussion. A couple scenarios for an updated build-out analysis. The last one that was done in Deerfield was in like September 11th or something, so. Yeah, over the next meeting, I'll be able to share that and we can just kind of talk about it. Other than that. Kayla, I did mention this at the last meeting, but she is cool with having a table, a planning board. Be represented at a table at a farmer's market or a couple of farmers markets. And she asked for, she needs insurance to her insurance company. I asked Karen yesterday. Now could be the finance to provide that, so. Stay tuned for that. I will want one or two representatives there. It's not an all-day thing. It's just how long the.
Eight to ten thirty.
Yeah, so pretty quick. We'll do a few of them if she allows us.
If she offering free coffee. I'm serious.
Right next to the donut booth.
Yeah, I don't know. I'm gonna reach out to the library as well to see if we can piggyback on some of their events. Look at some other suggestions. I couldn't make. All those things happen either this weekend.
Is there anything we can do to start putting out information to the town for our survey that could possibly have a QR code that would say link to a survey with a set of questions that people could go boom? And then when they get home at night, open it up and answer it and submit it to something that we could keep track of?
Yeah, absolutely. If that's what the board wants to do, absolutely.
I mean, that in addition to many other.
Yeah.
Whatever platforms we can get just to start getting some good feedback in because I like the old, I like the farmer's market idea, but you gotta keep in mind that. There's a, it's not a hundred percent of Deerfield residents who attend.
Yeah.
But any other platforms we could utilize with that.
In with a, a survey.
Yeah.
You put that in the Gazette?
Oh, yeah, I can put it in the, and my guess is, I don't know if Dana would want to do this, but might be able to put it in.
I would ask her and reach out, but I mean, I, I'm loving the QR code thing more and more because it's.
Click, boom.
Click, boom, brings you to something and we could pull a good.
We could post that QR code around town.
Exactly.
Actually, if.
It could, it could be on the pub. It could be on the wall of.
Yeah, it could be anywhere.
Yeah.
You can put it on, yeah.
Everybody gets one entry and.
Yeah, I like that idea. The other thing is, I, do you guys want to go over this tonight?
No. We need to go over it. We have to go over it.
Please read it. My, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go over one as an example. You should have one, Jared. This is a, this is a memo I wrote. Going over the different Senate and House bills that were recently enacted that changed the RSA, how they relate to Deerfield's regulations. I'm gonna go through just one as an example, but I want you guys to read through this in the next meeting. I would like to have a discussion on this, so.
Give me the one that's an example to possibly like our earlier presentation from somebody applying to something.
The.
It sounded like you had something cooking there.
ADU could be one. Yeah, let's, let's do ADU. So HE five seven seven revises RSA six seventy four seventy one to require at least one ADU by right. Attached or detached on any single-family lot. Limit parking requirements to one additional space for ADUs. Prohibit limiting ADUs to only one bedroom. Establish ADU size between seven fifty to nine fifties per feet. Permit owner occupancy requirements. Allow separate utility service. Permit conversion of existing non-conforming structures. So at a quick glance of the Deerfield regs. Here's what I think. For the zoning ordinance, which would require planning board recommendation for a warrant article. Update section three eighteen to comply. With a one space limit for all residential units.
This is two eighty four. Oh, that's the, okay, that's the parking limit thing. Prior one.
No more than one additional parking space. As far as I can tell from the regs, that's really the only thing that the town needs to change when there's.
The, the seven fifty to nine fifty doesn't apply because?
We went by percentage.
Yeah.
So.
I thought that it had a max though.
Thirty-three percent of the total square footage of your house.
Okay.
But that's, that, that's your max.
That overrides the.
Nine fifty.
Five seventy seven?
But minimum, no matter what the size of your house, can be seven fifty.
Right.
So if you have a, yeah, gotcha.
The only question I have is with the electrical separate utility service. National electric code, if the dwellings are attached. You have to have a fire suppression break between the two dwellings in order to put a separate utility onto the other unit. Which, and I do believe we'd have to look into it. I think it's supposed to penetrate the roof line by two feet. It has to be fire retardant both sides.
Oh, yeah, a fire, a firewall.
Firewall separating the two. You can't have two power services going into one dwelling. Per national electric code.
And that's something I did.
So this, this is allow separate utility service.
So you have to make sure this.
I would have to talk to the building inspector to see. Yeah.
We, we can go over.
Right.
The national electric code, we can't go under. So if the electric code is saying you can't do this without a fire suppression wall, we can't go under that.
Right, so, but if there's one service for, for both units.
One service for both units, that's perfectly fine.
Yeah.
So these are all what we have to go by now?
Well.
Have these been passed?
Yes, these have been passed.
Yeah.
These are state law.
Okay, and we have to.
We have to come into compliance.
How long do we have to do that, just till next town meeting?
I mean, we should.
Or, or do we, are these by our decision or do we have to go, we have to go to town meeting?
You have to go to town meeting.
For some of them you do, but some of them you don't.
Yeah, some of the changes would be subdivision regulation changes.
Right, like number three, for example, of the asset rights.
Which, I have that on my computer, all the stuff we talked about before.
Yeah.
And it's, would be a matter of including these. Plus, held the diameter for turnaround.
Yeah.
So. Yeah, so like I, I had a note in here for the ZBA and your actual card. Consider clarifying that ADU size must, yeah, at least seven fifty square feet, no more than nine fifty unless otherwise allowed by town. I think the zoning regs are pretty good.
Yeah.
And I, I may, I think. Maybe don't listen to that unless, unless you guys want it.
Well, we, yeah, we've got, we've got the seven fifty square foot in the ordinance.
Yeah.
So, or thirty, thirty-five percent, so.
That'd be the same thing with the additional parking spot. We could go, they're saying you have to at least allow one, but we, if we wanted to have two.
They wanna just say.
No, they only want one.
Okay.
So I'd have to change that.
That's to mean we can go above, we can't go below.
No, they're, they're setting it.
They're setting it on one, okay.
They're setting a maximum of one, right. Well, that, that.
Pretty bizarre.
We could have a one-bedroom ADU with two people.
So I'm saying you got a, a couple or a girlfriend, boyfriend.
Both could have their own car.
Right, so what do you do then?
That's what I was asking. That's why I was asking that.
Yeah, right.
Even if it's an elderly parent.
In a care paper.
Elderly.
The thing is like, in Deerfield and in rural towns, that really isn't a big deal.
Right. Manchester.
This is for like in Manchester, for example, where a city is like, if someone wants to build an ADU, the only thing stopping them is they need to require two parking spaces.
So the kicker on this one is, it says one parking space and then run underneath, it says not prohibiting, you know, more than one bedroom.
Yeah, yeah, but read it. It says limit parking requirements.
To one.
To one additional space for the ADU.
Right.
So i- if you, you know, you, you can only require one, but if there's a, a friend or a helper or something like that.
That's what I was getting at.
Yeah, you could.
Exactly.
Yeah, you should, you should be fine. And, and this is more like a, in an urban setting.
Yes.
If you were requiring two.
Right.
It would be a.
Very hard.
Hardship.
Well, it'd be a hardship.
Correct.
Yeah. Park on the street.
I, you know.
Except for some. Manchester properties, that's all they have. There's, there's some existing properties of Manchester that don't have off-street.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I know. I have somebody Concord too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, okay, take a, take a look through this. It's not perfect. Just some of my reading of it. Something that we're gonna have to work through. Yeah.
So on the ones that have, we can change or we have a little bit of say in that we'll have to talk about at town meeting. Can the planning board make a recommendation, like the select, selectmen will have a recommendation on a matter? So we could have it, put out our recommendation, which may or may not.
Yeah, we do that. Yeah, we do that and our, our, our warrants go up top, do they not?
Yeah.
Our zoning, yeah, so it's, it's separate from this.
You know.
It says this is recommended or this is not recommended, okay?
For example, like recently when we changed or recommended a warrant article to amend the zoning for, to be in compliance with a national flood insurance program. You know, I don't know how many people read through that, but the, the wording was to be in compliance with state law. I think that's what the planning board would probably recommend.
Right.
You know, the thing is people can vote it down.
Oh, yeah.
In which I think a lot of towns are asking the same question of what happens then. So.
Cause they don't understand it.
In that, in that same, in that same warrant, there was the distance between houses thing.
Yeah.
And the vote on the two was quite different. Because one was, you know, to be in compliance and the other was, you know, to be consistent.
But the, for, to, to change, to amend the subdivision site plan regs, all the planning board needs is a notified, notice public hearing, so. Do that at end of meeting, so. Or, or maybe it's a public hearing and then. Or, or maybe it's a public hearing and then. I'll have to double check.
Oh, and the subdivision change?
Yeah.
Yeah, just one, one hearing is required.
Okay. Okay, so please take a look at this next meeting, I'll come back.
Wait, no, you're gonna get another question.
Can I ask one question real quick? Do I have everybody? I had a resident reach out to me, and say for instance, hypothetically, somebody wants to open a business in town where there was once a pre-existing business, and they want to open up a business that's similar in comparison to what was there a while ago. Does the new person need to come and reapply for a site plan?
Yeah.
And get approvals and whatnot?
If, if the previous use is over, or discontinued use is over a year.
Yeah.
Then they have to come in.
Close away.
Okay.
But, you know, if they have a site plan and it's gonna be a similar use, maybe pretty easy for them to come in.
Yeah, I, I have that.
And it could just be a minor site plan amendment is what it could be too.
Yeah.
Is through a change of use. I'll, I'll double check that.
I was talking to the building inspector in Northwood about a possible situation like that, and he looked at the, he looked up the property and said, oh, yeah, it's already got a site plan, so no problem, you just, we'll just do an amendment to the site plan.
Yeah.
And it was a substantially different use of, but still a business. It was a business site plan, so.
Right, right.
It's, they just, it was almost like they just needed to know what was going on.
Yeah, it's really just kind of administratively for the town to know kind of what's.
What's going on.
So I'd be happy to meet with this person, or if you just want to relay that information, that's okay too, but.
Yeah, I'll relay it back to the resident who asked me about it, and we'll see if anything actually materializes from what he was talking about.
Yeah.
But I just, I thought about that and then I realized I haven't seen anything come across the table here about it, so.
Well, that's nine times out of ten is when somebody comes in for a conceptual.
Right.
Like, this, that happened with Blue Bowl. They came in initially with conceptual for, prior to who's there now.
Mm-hmm.
And then they had the store for a while, it didn't work, and then Mr. Porter came in. His was pretty much a conceptual, but he did get some drawings for us.
Right.
And we were able to vote on something. So if they have an idea, they can come in and they could call Cam, and Cam would say, well, you probably would need to do this, or you come before the board and.
Yeah, I mean, I usually recommend a conceptual for the board, even when I meet with people, because, you know, I'll tell them what's needed in the regs, but I can't say how, I can't say how the board's gonna vote, so I like for them to hear from you guys.
Motion to adjourn.
No.